We call to order the Lake Mills City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. Could I get the roll call, please?
Mr. Fields?
Yeah.
Did I hear him say here?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thanks. Diane? Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, for those that can stand, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, item four, correction and/or approval of the city council budget work session and the regular meeting minutes of September 15th, 2020. If there's any reason that we should take these separate, let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion of adoption.
Second.
That was Mr. Fields and seconded by Vicky, by Vicky Schmidt. Let's call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Item five, correspondence. Uh, Vicky, would you want to start if you have anything?
I can't get any correspondence this week that I recall.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fritsch?
Same here. I didn't get anything either.
Okay. Mr. Fields? Okay. We'll have to talk about that because I'm going down there and I don't know if we have to notice that. We'll, we'll talk about that later. It's gonna be two of us plus Steve, I think. We're, we're okay. Okay, I just want to make sure. Yeah. Okay, we'll talk about that. Uh, let's see here. Diane yet? Not yet? All right, uh, the only correspondence I had was from, uh, Mr. Van Dayton and he's on tonight and that's a topic that we're gonna sort of discuss this evening, so I won't get into that. Back to. All right, now we're on questions and public comment. Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you register with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please, your, please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided for the folks that are in the audience here. For those that are attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature. Is there anybody that wishes to speak at this time?
This is Diane, I'm on the phone.
Did somebody say something?
Yeah. This is Diane. I'm on the phone. But I can't get on the computer.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not hearing her through my headphones, so, but I see she's here. Is there anybody online that wishes to make a public comment? At this time? All right, hearing nothing. We will move on to item seven, the city manager's report. Steve, the floor is yours.
All I've provided is the monthly police department report and I have nothing else to add tonight.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to item eight, the acceptance of minutes from the parks board of July 15th, 2020. The joint Rock Lake Committee of August 4th, 2020. The Police and Fire Commission of May 21st, 2020. The Housing Authority of May 26th, 2020. And the Housing Authority of June 23rd, 2020. Those mitt, excuse me, those mitten, mitt. Start this again. Those minutes, not mittens, will go on record as written. I don't know why I wanted to say mittens. Uh, maybe I'm thinking winter's coming too soon. That moves us into council business. Item A is discussion decision on the liquor license Class B beer and Class C wine. Missy, could I get you to read that title for us, please?
Motion twenty dash ten dash one dash one, authorizing the granting of Class B beer and Class C wine licenses to Dita LLC, DBA Lake Mills Family Restaurant, 962 Mulberry Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, and appointing Nicole Quintana as agent.
Mike, your, mic is muted.
That's weird. Okay, so we have a, a motion by Mr. Fritsch and a second by Mr. Fields.
Thank you.
Uh, motion twenty dash ten dash one dash one. And my understanding of this is just a change of management for this, is that what this is about?
It's actually just the LLC had changed. It's the same owner, same agent, same license that they had before. When they went to do the renewal, I noticed the, the new name, um, which warranted them doing a new application opposed to renewal and they just chose to hold off a little bit because, um, they weren't really serving with COVID. So they're ready to go now, but there's no, no change except for the LLC name.
Okay. Is there any other comments on this? All right, hearing nothing, please call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you. Keep my finger away from that mute button. Uh, item nine B, discussion decision on development agreement, 1324 South Main Street. Could you read that title for us, please?
City Council motion twenty dash ten dash one dash two, authorizing the city manager to execute development agreement with Silverstone Holdings LLC for the development of Silverstone Apartment Development at 1324 South Main Street.
All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion of adoption for, excuse me, motion twenty dash ten dash one dash two. Motion made by Mr. Fritsch, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Schmidt. All right. Who would like to speak on this on behalf of the staff?
We'll start with Dan.
Sounds good, Mr.?
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, okay, you have a development agreement in front of you. The developer is here tonight and I am quite certain that he'd like to address the council. The development is for two 16-unit apartment buildings at 1324 South Main Street. It involves an extension of city utilities to that point. Um, it's basically just north of the boundaries of the city of Lake Mills, of the southern boundary of the city of Lake Mills at this time. There's a lot of, uh, development that's occurring in the area due to the Highway 89 rebuild. Uh, last year, you, um, amended TID number five in anticipation of the development that's upcoming and this is a TID agreement, excuse me, development agreement. Um, there is a, an amount of money that is, um, promised for reimbursement of certain, uh, development of infrastructure, certain development needs that the developer has on the property. Um, there are two more developments that are occurring in the same area, uh, which you'll see development agreements for in the relative near future. What, what would you like me to cover on the topic? Do you have any questions for me? I wrote a short memo, I provided you the agreement, there's a pro forma that's been prepared, there will be an adjustment to that. That, that was basically confidential until this meeting. Um, the developer has contemplated changing the, um, the, which, which buildings are being built when, um, and he's basically going to stagger, his plan right now is to stagger and build one building in the first year and one building in the second year, so that pro forma will need to be changed slightly. That has development in the, of the two buildings in one year right now, that's contemplated. Um, the roadwork that will be done, we plan on coming through with the state grant or the federal grant that we're, uh, in line for in the next year and bringing the roadwork after the development is relative completed, um, to bring all of the, the southern 89, um, boundary of Lake Mills to bring up to city standards. Um, there's a substantial amount of, uh, utility work in site that will also eventually extend into the northern boundaries of the other developments that are contemplated. So we kind of see number five supporting these three developments and kind of working off of each other, um, in the, the relative short term here. You're going to see a lot of new development on the south side.
Okay, so as I looked at this, obviously it's in the plot that's on the south side of the trail. Um, and I was trying to make heads or tails, I was looking at the different worksheet and I was trying to understand exactly what we were looking at for a projected TID dollar and we are doing that as reimbursements, like you said, correct?
Correct. So if you, if you open up...
The developer's agreement.
Well, no, you have to open up the exhibits. He's asking about the pro forma, which is exhibit number C. I think that's the best showing of what the valuation is anticipated to be. Uh, line number eight is 2021 and you see the value added as 2.4 million in that line? That is the contemplated value, the assessed value of both buildings together. So if, if the, if the onsite improvements are, um, accomplished during that time and only one building is built, as he's currently planning to do, I believe, then you can basically just cut that number in half for the first year anticipated assessed value, which will reduce the first year of, um, the...
Increment.
The, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading it. The increment value that's created and you can see that in the next line, 2022 inside, um, the inflation value is 24,000. That would be the TID increment that's created if both buildings are, are, um, built out on schedule. However, we, we anticipate, excuse me, that's, that's a misstatement. Basically double that if both buildings are, um, built out in the first year. And if only one building is built out, that's a relative, um, showing of what the valuation of that building would be, what the increment value, what the tax increment created will be.
So if you're looking at the green column that says tax increment and you're looking at that line that says number eight, which is an actual 2023 because it takes a little while to get the money, there would be $49,000 generated if there were two buildings, if there's only one that cuts in half.
Right.
And that's what Dan was explaining. So instead of 49,000, you're getting about 24 and a half.
And then?
So it, it has a, about a $25,000 impact, um, on the overall. So if you're looking at the bottom line, um, the developer's agreement gives him $300,000, up to $300,000. And his increment's gonna generate 1,027,000 roughly. If he builds a second building a year later, it's still a million dollars.
But, uh, for the life of the TID?
For the life of the TID.
Okay. Okay, those were the questions I had. Steve, do you have anything?
Yeah, when you look at this document and you compare it to the, the, uh, developer's agreement, um, at this point on page 13 of the developer's agreement, probably where the key item is in my mind, uh, because you already mentioned, we're not borrowing the money, they're borrowing the money and then we're paying them their increment on an annual basis. But we will pay them in an amount up to $300,000. That's what's in that agreement right now.
Yeah.
Christian did bring in an item that had 400 and some thousand dollars. I don't know if he's gonna ask for that or not tonight, that's up to you. Our base that we started at was 300,000. So what would happen is, is he'd have to prove that he spent that much money, whatever amount.
Sure, yeah.
And then we would take that amount and we would reimburse annually up to the amount that he's proven that he's spent that qualifies for TID increment.
Yeah. How much is in that TID right now as far as increment?
Uh, there's nothing right now.
Yeah.
Um, all the increment's gonna be generated either by his facility or, um, um, Jason Forrest and Doug Mullay or Toples.
Toples, okay.
So when you look at that pro forma and it started in '23, he's not gonna start getting payments until '23.
Okay.
Because there's no increment.
There's nothing.
To pay out until '23.
Okay, that's, that's why I asked that question. Cause I saw that there and it's like, how do we, how do we pay for something if we don't have it?
And we don't.
Right. Okay, but it's as an understanding that nothing will be basically based on the pro forma, that nothing will be paid out until there is some increment.
That's right.
And having proof of, um, payment as far as for reimbursement has to be shown.
Right, and it's, it, it's, uh, it, it relieves us of several issues. I think it still kind of qualifies as debt, but we don't have to worry about whether the amount of debt that we even, our debt payment has to be paid. Normally, we write in our TID development agreements that if your increment doesn't cover the debt payment, you have to make up the rest. Well, in this case, they're making the debt payments and we're paying them increment. Uh, if it doesn't cover it, if it, you know, it's, that's their problem, not ours.
Okay. Okay, no, that makes sense. As long as, you know, when you mentioned that, I thought about our debt cap.
Yeah, I haven't technically asked yet whether guaranteeing increment to someone else who's borrowed money qualifies as debt. I don't know that and that's a question that Betsy and I will need to run past, uh, LRS.
LRS, yeah, okay.
But either way, it, it substantially reduces our problems with borrowing money and paying it back.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Fields? Uh, you got some questions rattling around in your brain, don't you?
Yeah, I was just wondering, we're starting out with a couple of large TIF funding. How much money is a lot of TIF for the rest of the, uh, TID five? How is this gonna impact our overall ability to key, continue expansion there?
The, I, I guess I, not fully understanding the question, the TID can go as, as long as there's increment generated, the TID can go. So if you're looking at his increment of a million dollars, we could spend up that million dollars over the life of the TID. If you're looking at the next one and the next one and the next one, so you look at, at Tyranny and a Point, that increment was 13 million dollars. So you had a million dollars onto the 13 million dollars and the next project has another million dollars and the next project has another million dollars. You could easily be 16 million dollars and if you have other projects, depending on their increments, you could, can, can continue to go up because that just covers the cost of the payments. Um, so it's kind of based on what your debt capacity is and, um, how you finance it. So that's why a lot of communities have flipped to this form of financing where the developer actually finances it and we repay with the increment. So it's...
Yeah.
I guess I'm hoping I'm answering the question.
Yeah, it sounded similar to the question I asked. Basically, how do you, do you pay it if you don't have the increment in there? And it's basically part of the agreement that it won't be paid out until there is increment based on... Possibly, right. There's possibly, a possibility of us incurring debt.
Yep.
But that's what, yeah, that's what Steve has to look into to see if it counts against our debt cap.
Okay. Eventually it's gonna come back to us, but I'm just looking at our debt ratio for short-term spending.
Yep.
I don't think it does because that's why all the other, that's why LRS and all the other municipality municipalities are recommending it, but I, I haven't checked into that firmly. Uh, our debt capacity is pretty strong and, and what happens is, is you're looking at, our increment is this, that means that the new assessed value is this, so your debt capacity is expanding exponentially over and above that. So it's, it's really pretty minor. So if you're at 50% of their increment, which is 500,000, not even 300,000 dollars, you're still way ahead on the assessed value that you're gaining by, uh, drawing the, you know, the public improvement or the, uh, assessed value on the new improvements.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Fritsch, do you have anything? And Diane or Vicky?
No, I'm okay. Okay.
Sounded like Diane was saying something, but we lost her.
She did, she said okay.
Oh, okay, good. Um, so it sounds like the developer would like to say something, so let's, uh, could I get a motion to, well, actually, do we need to? Because it, it's just, it's just cleaner to do it. Let's do it. Could I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
So Mr. Fritsch and Mr. Fields seconded. Go ahead and call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch? Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you.
Dan, you're gonna have to go and, and, uh, oh, no, it's up, sorry.
It's still up, okay.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Christian Stitts. I'm the developer on the site. The biggest thing I guess I'd like to address is the, uh, funding for the project and the TID. The, uh, initial numbers I was working with, uh, through staff, the general, the $300,000 ask, uh, is short of what the TID eligible, uh, cost would be, uh, for the project. Uh, because it's, because the sewer water, uh, extension and stormwater management on the site really goes on, uh, the $300,000. The additional, uh, ask for this project would be engineering fees, uh, site planning, uh, demo work that needs to be done on the site, uh, survey CSM fees, uh, plant state reviews, uh, as well as utilities. So those additional items, uh, potentially would come to around 100,000. So my, uh, ask isn't necessarily a time number, although, uh, hard to ask, especially the sewer water, we're in negotiating those numbers currently, uh, but, uh, I guess would just like assurance that those, all these asks could be covered under the TID funding.
You need to turn your mic on.
Yeah, I'm on, um...
No, that was me. He could hear me, you guys couldn't hear me, so sorry. I wanted to ask Dan how that could be handled, especially with the agreement already being provided to us and these numbers are still an unknown. Is there a way to account for them at a later date if they come up? Or is it better to try to put them in the initial developer's agreement?
It, my preference certainly would be to get as much comprehensive information into this document as possible, okay? I want all of the estimates of costs, all of the covered items. I want to make it as, as the complete picture as possible. So that would be the best roll. However, we're under a little bit of time constraints. All of these projects want to get going. So the way that the motion is drafted right now is it's conditional approval. There's a number of issues that still need to be sorted out. We need electric estimates to be finalized, certain cities, city, um, processes to be finalized and overall agreement needs to be addressed in certain ways. However, there is a number that was previously, um, approved based on, not by the city council, but by staff, um, based on the pro forma and what we anticipated the ask to be. So at the point that we're at right now, the council certainly could amend what is written there. However, I don't know that you have the best basis in, um, the overall picture at this point to do that. So we could certainly enter into an agreement and amend it in writing later. That puts the, the contractor, the developer at a little bit of a disadvantage. If the funds aren't there, the city can say no and there's no amendment. So what I would do, I think the, the best way to go, I know the contractor's itching to get, get going. Um, there's certain aspects of, uh, the development that could start now. Um, however, any TID eligible reimbursement really shouldn't be completed until the development agreement is entered into. So either we hold off on executing the developer agreement until adequate information is, is, um, comprehensively put into the agreement and everyone's comfortable with it, or we move on the numbers that we have now and amend it in a future date, or the city council decides to amend the number at this point. Um, each, each approach has its pitfalls, so I'm gonna leave that to you guys for your decision-making process. Steve's statement in the, in his, um, statements on this agreement and the pro forma that was completed is that the TID does, that based on the anticipated development, that there would be capacity to accommodate the request that the developer is asking for. What does that mean right now? Nothing's built right now, but we're planning towards it. So that, that's just what you get to struggle with. I don't have the best answer for you.
My opinion is, is we've always structured that as a cap. So if you said, okay, we're gonna allow you to have 450,000 dollars and he can't spend that much or he spends over it, that's his problem. We only reimburse what he can justify. So if that's 350, that's all he gets. If he spends 550 and you're, and the contract says up to 450, that's it. So, you know, if, if he needs it tonight and you guys set a number, you know, unless you want to amend that in the future, that's what he's gotta live with.
So what? What can be started, if anything, without this agreement? This is the linchpin for everything, right? This starts everything rolling. So if nothing happened and we asked for more, more information, that would put him in a standstill.
That's correct.
Yep.
He could, there's only one item that I think he could do and that's to poor footings, other than that, any grading. Any demolition, any water and sewer extensions would all, he would all lose money on by running those without a TID agreement in place.
Okay, um, does anybody else need any more information from the city staff?
Turn your mic on, please.
On your screen, on your screen.
There we go.
He couldn't do any improvements that he wanted reimbursement from the TID from. And that's a substantial amount of the early work, grading is eligible for TID reimbursement. The underground work with regard to utilities is eligible for reimbursement, and that's really the key thing, he has to get the utilities to the site. We have one estimate in um, the developers is working on another estimate at this point. Um, and that's, that's what we've based the number on, but the expenses have already ballooned a little bit, it sounds like.
It's up to four twenty-one from his engineer today. And then Paul submitted his, his uh, electric estimates and he had twenty-one thousand seven hundred, so you're but, you're at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On what we know today.
Okay.
And I would say that's more than adequate.
All right. Mr. Fields, this is a lot of the work you do on a daily basis in your regular job. So I wouldn't mind hearing your input, um, recommendations or thoughts or what we should do as a council. Yeah, I don't think they have you on.
If he is, he's really low, his mic says it's on, but.
We'll figure it out here. Uh-uh. No, we don't have you. Says it's off now, now it says it's on. Huh.
Maybe if Mr. Fields can just try unplugging his headset, it should go through the microphone, iPad.
Yeah, just unplug it for right now.
See if that works.
See if that works that way.
Try it this way.
Yep, we can hear you now.
Perfect. Christian, if we're, if you're going forward with just the first. Is this three hundred thousand enough to get, if we bring this maximum with the updated?
Um, you know, if if you're asking, yeah, I feel more comfortable moving forward with with a number, you know, that's that's higher than that, just because then. You know, I know it's in place, but uh, and and most of these costs are are front end, you know, almost all of them. Sewer water grading, regardless of doing one building or two buildings, the cost is gonna be realized at almost the full, the full amount. Um, my intent is is uh, with with wanting to start this fall yet, is to try to get one building up. Um, and lease up by spring and then start the second building right away, so this is something that potentially at this year, at this time next year. Be completed project, optimistically, but um, you know, uh, depending on how. It continues to proceed, yeah, if it pushes it into spring, obviously that, you know, uh, uh. Then extends the project, so.
And and most of the TIP dollars, TID dollars that you're looking for are mostly the utilities and the underground, that's the stuff you have to start with anyways. Talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it.
The additional engineering and drawings and submissions and utility work is prices sound in line. For the extra that you'd be asking for, and it would have to qualify in the rules of TID.
Yeah.
For it, so.
Okay.
The TID.
And after listening to um, Mr. Welkey and and Mr. Drescher about this and about the. The way the increment is built up, it does sound like. If it works out the way it is planned, there's plenty of increment in there to take care of this. The question is. Do we have somebody, one of the council members like, would like to amend the cap? On page thirteen of the, of the uh, developer's agreement. To go to four hundred and fifty thousand from three hundred thousand. Is that what we need, Mr. Drescher, if we were gonna do that?
Based on the information that we have at this point that's been delivered by the developer, that would be his ask. About that four hundred and fifty, that includes the most recent information on the electric estimate, which is not included in the document right now. Was provided by Public Works today, um, and I believe that does come in at just over twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand seven hundred, if I remember correctly. So with with his most current estimate that we received, um, and that document, or that that estimate from the Public Works Department, that's about where he's at. Granted, he is still fishing for other um. Estimates on the initial underground work, he has one in, I think he's looking at that one again and also asking for another one, so. The numbers are still in flux a little bit.
Okay.
He's not guaranteed.
That would be the ask.
He's not guaranteed four hundred and fifty thousand if, even if they put that in there, because he's got to prove that he spent the money.
Yeah, it it would just be a cap.
Not one hundred percent agree with that, yep.
And from what I got from Mr. Welkey, it sounds like that uh, the TID could. The TID could manage that and handle that uh, without an issue based on the increment that will be built. Upon that as these buildings are completed. So what I would ask then is if somebody feels comfortable with it, a council member to make a motion to amend. The uh, page thirteen, what is it? Where is it? In the developer's agreement, just to, yeah, to change.
I'll make that, I can make that motion to raise the cap from three hundred thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
For the finding.
Perfect, that's Mr. Fields and that section, it was section six on page thirteen. Okay, so that was made, do we have a second? You second?
No.
No? We need a second.
I'll give a second.
And Diane gives a second? Thank you, Diane. Is there any other? Comments on that portion before we vote on that amendment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can you turn your microphone on, please, Mr. Fritsch?
So we, as a city entity, won't be on the hook for anything. We're setting a cap and the developer will have to provide receipts and show. Uh, payment in order to get reimbursed on those funds, but that reimbursement won't start until. The TID starts earning increment and that won't start earning increment till twenty twenty-three sometime. So they won't see any payments uh, for reimbursement until twenty twenty-three when. The buildings are completed and there's increment being uh, built in that.
Actually paid in.
Paid into that TID, yeah.
All right, so, and you have to remember, they're only getting the increment. So if everything goes to hell and their assessed value goes down, it would have to go down more than fifty percent, first of all, because. Our estimate is a million bucks and you're only giving them up to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that would have to really go to hell. And then on on top of that, even if it went to zero, w- w- all we pay is the increment. So if the increment is zero, they get zero.
So it has some pretty good protections for us in there as the city entity and as the TID manager. Does that answer? Okay. Okay, are there any other questions on the amendment before we vote on it? All right, so the amendment is to raise the cap to four hundred and fifty for reimbursement. Based on increment. Go ahead and call the roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
That was you, Steve.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Okay, so now we have the actual motion, motion twenty dash ten dash one dot, dash two. Having a amended developer's agreement. So. We do have a motion on this already, don't we? And a second, is there any more? Discussion anybody wants to have before we vote on this? Okay, let's call the roll call vote on motion twenty dash ten dash one dash two.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Mr. Fritsch.
He said yes, aye.
Thank you. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Okay, motion's passed, the developer agreement has the four hundred and fifty up to cap in that and uh. Yeah, go forward and make some nice apartments for us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good night.
Night. Okay, that puts us into item C discussion on formation of the Arlac Study Committee and committee appointments. Um, for this one, there is no motion and this is just purely discussion for us. I saw you looking at me, I thought I had my mic off again, sorry, Dan. Um, okay, so. While I was out and I forget the, the meeting, there was only one meeting I was out, unfortunately. The recommendation was made to form a study committee for the potential purchase of the Arlac building. To be. Ma- maintained by the city, but the programs managed by. The school system and potentially the Arlac board. To manage the personnel, the programs and everything that goes along with the community center. So I did receive an email today from Mr. Dayton, thank you very much. And it gave me a few names here, if I can get back to it here. Of folks that would like to volunteer, so I have those names. I I don't remember how we formed the last committee, how did we request names? How how did we ask for other community volunteers besides? Yeah. So, should we put this on our website? Should we put something in the paper to say we're looking for folks to help us study this? And then add, then build the committee from there. Um, I I don't see a reason why the five names that Mr. Dayton sent us already can't be on that. Um, but I would like to get this request out there into the community. So we can hopefully get a few more people that have. No, um, what did we have last time? Stop at a hundred, what what did we have last time? We had about. Yeah, I I think that's too many. Um, maybe fifteen at the most. Yeah, so I think our our biggest challenge is getting this out there to. Folks that may be interested, that just don't know it yet and don't know that we're asking for this type of. Of committee to be put together and that's what I'm looking for right now is. What are the recommendations? I would like to ask the city to put it on the website. And then. Put a, or put something in the paper. Yep. Yeah, and I can definitely do that, um, my thing is to get those lists of folks first and. You know, we uh, we continually get told that we're planning stuff in a bubble. So how do we get the information out there to ask these people? Only things I know is the paper and the website. And that's where getting these names from Ben was great. But I know there's other people out there that may be interested, so any recommendations you guys have? I will take those to the staff and we'll start running with them, but those are my two main uh, items.
That's the best way to start off.
Yeah.
I think we should have.
Go ahead, Vicky.
I think we should have some city administration people on here too.
Okay.
So there can be a little bit more directions so that it's not too free flowing. Because the city's gonna be looking for a certain type of, of um. Um, structure and you don't want to open it up too wide without some direction. So there should probably be some city administration people helping to guide the committee.
Yep. Yeah, and we can do that, it wouldn't hurt to have at least one council member as part of the team also. Okay, so. I don't know how far of a reach you folks have out in the community. But getting the information out there is important, I will work with the city staff and see if we can get something in the paper. Um, I'll work with Misty to see what we can get on the website to let people know what we're doing. And we'll, we'll go from there and hopefully we'll have something. To get.
Is Carol Burrows' name on there?
Is it Diane?
Yes, is Carol Burrows' name?
Well, Carol's here right now, so. And she is on the list that Ben gave me, so thank you for asking, Diane. And she is on the list that Ben gave me, so thank you for asking Diane.
Okay, just wanted to know because I think if anybody should be on it, she should be.
Did she hear me?
Yes.
I heard you.
Okay, well, she's here and she was one of the recommendations from Ben, so. Uh, thank you, so what I'd like to do is have these names. Solidified, I would say by the end of. Either the end of next week or the week after that based on what we can get in the paper. And then what we get back from people, so.
Who is the go to person if you have a name of a person, who do we contact?
I know she said something, but I can't hear it.
She wants to know who to contact.
With names? Who who's who is for me, you know?
If somebody wants to volunteer, they can come contact me.
And I would put a deadline on it, a sign up on there too, if you're gonna exit, put a date down there you want them in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like them in by the end of next week. So that means the sixteenth.
Yeah, but that's not very long.
Uh, yeah, and that's what I worry about, so that's why I was saying the twenty third. October twenty third.
What I if I may make a suggestion there, why don't we um. Put the notices out and have everybody submit to the clerk, to the city clerk, just to gather the information and then we can distribute to you. Just so we have it in the record.
Okay, you're you're welcome Misty.
Sorry Misty.
Can we?
Uh, okay, so with that being said then, why don't we go out to the thirtieth? That way there's plenty of time for us to. To to work our magic hopefully and hopefully we'll get some people that we haven't seen or talked to before.
Okay, so we want applicants.
I can Diane, well Mike's having problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't hear Diane, I'm sorry.
Couldn't we um.
Is she asking something?
Have it on? Yes. Um, couldn't we have it on our next agenda? So that we could see where we are in it, if we've got enough people, we're happy with the people. Then we could, if we put it on the agenda as an action item, we could even. Set it up by then.
Do you hear that Mike?
If we.
Uh, no, I heard her talking, but I couldn't make out what she said.
She was, Diane was just saying that if we put it on our next agenda, um, which would be on the twentieth. If there is enough interest at that point, my only concern is if you want me to put this in the newspaper, it won't even hit the newspaper until next week, the fifteenth. Um.
Oh, okay.
For delivery, that'd be my concern about the newspaper portion of it from my end.
Yeah. I I'd love to get it done there early, but I see your point and that's why I say if we can get stuff by the. Thirtieth. And then have it on our, assuming the November third is the meeting, the next meeting after that, right?
That is correct.
Then we could have it on the agenda then to solidify the. The committee and then move forward with what we're gonna ask them to do.
Okay, so right now, um, Mr. Foster, you want me to advertise this on our website and in the newspaper? Um, have interested individuals send their applications basically to me as the city clerk and then I will pass them on to you. Um, with a deadline of October thirtieth and I'm looking to put this on a November third agenda.
Perfect.
That's what.
Yep, that's.
Was there anything else I missed in there?
No, um, the only note I have for you still is I sent you, I forwarded you that email with the six names from Ben Dayton. So you have those already, those.
Yes, I do.
We'll count those as applicants already.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else on that? If not, we're gonna move on to the. Next item, uh, item ninety, resolution twenty dash thirty six.
Diane has a comment Mike.
Okay.
Yes, I I would like to make that agenda item an action item at the beginning of November, not just a discussion.
Mr. Foster, she um, Mrs. Fritsch had just stated that she wants it to be an action item on the November third. Agenda, not a discussion item.
Oh, perfect, yeah, exactly, nope, that's what it was expected to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you Diane. Okay, uh, item ninety, resolution twenty dash thirty six, authorization to borrow funds, could I get you to read that for me please, Misty?
Resolution twenty dash thirty six, authorization to borrow funds, capital expenditures.
Excuse me. Uh, could I get a motion on this? Mr. Fritsch has the motion, is there a second?
Second Diane.
Diane, okay, I heard her that time, second Diane. Okay, and I'm making the assumption this is Betsy.
That's right.
Hey, we haven't heard from you today.
This is my item. Uh, what it is, uh, we have certain items that have were not included when we had borrowed through bonding earlier in the year. Um, these items were like computer software, uh, the copier, um. Defibrillators, those are items that didn't qualify for bonding. Um, you have a list of all of the items and the amounts, um, so I went to uh, Greenwood's, which is the bank we typically go to and uh. Asked for terms and um, they came back with terms that are similar to what we would have if I would have gone to the board of commissioners of public land. That's a a. A program, a loan program that's available to municipalities, going to our local bank is is easier, there isn't as much paperwork, um. This resolution before you is authorization for me to go to this bank to um. Have them draw up the paperwork and sign it and receive the money to fund all of the items that are on that list.
All these items were approved in the. Budget.
Right, right, you're correct, these are budgeted items.
And what we historically have done, what I should say historically, the last three years, we have. Because of the new bond laws divided it up and it really makes sense, this is that long term items are bonded and short term items we do notes on. Uh, and actually I think we're about twenty five thousand dollars less than what was budgeted.
Right, right, because these items, you know, the estimates came in a little better. You know, the estimates were a little higher than what the items actually cost in the end. So we were able to save some money in the borrowing.
Okay, so this was actually stuff that was approved in the twenty twenty budget.
Correct.
Does anybody have any questions or? Concerns, discussion items on this resolution and the. Uh, or the items? Uh, I do have one question and this is for future things, not so much for this one in particular. This copier, seven thousand one, that it it's for the offices here upstairs in this building, correct?
That's correct.
And do we buy it outright normally like that or do we ever consider leasing?
Um, this is outright purchase, um, when we're leasing items that, you know, this. Leases count against our um, borrowing capacity, there's the new laws in Gatsby have said that we now need to include that as. It's another kind of a borrowing mechanism, the way that they're looking at it.
So it it goes from a capital expense over to an operational expense.
But there, yeah, but they're they're looking at leases as if it's another borrowing mechanism when we have to calculate our. In in our audit and all of our financial documents, it's considered like a loan.
And Misty, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I do, um, I just want to let you know as well, Mr. Foster, that we buy these, um. I think this is, the last one lasted us five or six years, but we buy them through a state contract where this is actually about half the cost of what it would be. Um, to purchase it outright and then we take our. Um, machine that we're retiring out and pass it on to another department that doesn't have um, a need for such a high use. So for example, this last machine, um. We were, we sent down to the police department who did have a use for a larger unit, um, but then it did save their budget from having to budget that in and and get something or lease something as well. So it is pretty economical.
Okay, and so when you do that, I'm assuming that that like the police department, then they have to budget for their maintenance and. And paper and toner and all that stuff. So obviously.
Yeah, they they make the decision if we wanted, if they want to get into a maintenance agreement or just pay outright and then we usually have, I mean, the paper is always separate. Um, our maintenance agreement, uh, the toner and all the actual maintenance machine is included and we usually have. Um, enough, I know, well, the machine before this last one, we sent down waste on our treatment plant and I don't think they've ever had to actually order toner because there was enough to keep them going and it's been going five years. Um, just because they're limited use, so it's up to the department that takes it to decide how much use they're gonna need and what would best fit their department and their budget.
Okay. Alright, that's all I had, unless anybody else has anything, we'll call the roll call vote on this please. Nope, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, uh, item ten, recommendation for future agendas, we have a couple of things already we've talked about, is there anything else that we should? We should know about?
I believe there will be. Could you say that again Diane?
I I don't know what you talked about before I was able to connect on, but are the logos already on the agenda for that meeting or isn't it going to go on an agenda?
That's the logo she's talking about.
I have the email.
Yes.
To each of logos.
Yeah, she's talking about the logos Mike, um, Mike and I have been working on a survey. Or a poll, I guess. And we were gonna take the ones that went to the top of the list. And then put those out to the public to see which ones they felt were the best. So, um.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm looking at the email that we received about the logos. And it says, each council member should select their favorite, okay? That means you have five chosen, okay? And then it says, we can then send the favorites, would be those five, to the city staff and ask them to pick what they like. But that would still be those five, right?
It would be one of those five, if there were five different ones.
Yeah, right, exactly, and then the two that get the most votes go to the public. For their input in a survey, which is what you're working on now.
That's correct.
And um, and through the paper with a link to the survey, okay, so. I guess what I was wondering is, could the council be told what the two are? Before it goes farther, just so everybody's on the same page.
Sure can.
There's something, you know, I'm, what I'm thinking is, you know, sometimes, let's say I say I like this one. And then I don't talk to anybody about it, but then somebody else on the council says, you know, but if we take that one, this could happen or could be, you know. And then maybe it's something I never thought of, so maybe I would agree, oh yeah, that's right, we maybe better not use that one. So I'm just thinking, maybe once you get the five from the city council members, share those with the rest, all five of us to look at one time. Before it goes to the city staff and so forth, because sometimes I don't see what I, what's right in front of me.
So she wants something on the next agenda, is that what I'm get it getting at? She wants to see which ones were selected by the council?
No, she's not, she just wants. She wants the ones that were selected by the council members to kind of pass before the council members before it gets to staff.
Okay, yeah, that, we're saying the same thing.
Okay, excellent, good, thank you.
And that's fine. That could be an email that you manage. Unless you really think it needs to be agenda, an agenda item before we go to the.
No, I don't want it on an agenda, it's on an email.
She doesn't want it on the next agenda, she just wants an email.
Okay, that that's fine then, that'll work.
Uh, we do have likely two developers agreements coming forward.
Okay.
Um, so those will probably be on there, I don't know that we have anything else to you Dan that I can pick off right away.
Uh, the jurisdiction extension on eighty nine perhaps, but I'm not sure if we'll have correspondence from the DOT. I intend to put that um, forward to the Public Works Board just at least very generally, um, to get their acquiescence if we don't have the DOT agreement in place.
And uh. There was another item on that agenda that that uh, the corrosion control, do we want to come forward to the council with that at that time or do we want to wait?
Uh, we should talk to Paul on that one.
Alright.
I I, I mean, I think it makes sense to bring it forward.
Alright, but that's it Mike.
Okay. Alright, um, so I'm assuming the three of us is enough to convene in a closed session? Oh, is she? So there'll be four of us and.
Yes, I'll be there.
Vicki, will you uh, just want to call in?
If I can.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Who should I call?
You gonna be in there Dan, you want to ever call your?
Yeah, I I'll call you Vicki.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so item eleven, convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin stats, stats, statutes, boy, having a problem with this few words today. Let's start this over, convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation. Or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction. And this is one of the five things that we can. Call a public or a closed session on. Um, do I get a, could I get a motion to go into closed session?
Still move.
That's Mr. Fields and a second by Mr. Fritsch. Go ahead and call the roll call vote please.
Mr. Fritsch? Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Diane?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, so we are in closed session, we'll be going into a different room here and we will. Uh, close the session from there, we will not be coming back in here.